Meeting work session for Thursday, December 13th, 2018 is now called to order, and I would request the clerk to please call the roll.
Calling the roll, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Stevens.
Ms. Stevens is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon? Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Tuma?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Gallagher is absent at the moment. Mr. Schron?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Here.
And Council President Brady?
Is here.
He's here.
Here. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Has anybody signed in for public comment?
Ms. Lou?
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I know today you will have a very informative presentation from the gentleman sitting there. However, I have to bring something up here which is slightly kind of the continuation from Tuesday evening. This just happened yesterday. I went back into that particular place you know about. All of a sudden this time, instead of checking maybe your backpack or bags, this and that, all of a sudden this officer actually asked me to show my ankles. I did not know why. He said he wants to see my socks or whatever. Unfortunately, now I have to let you know I don't wear any socks. So, in that case, I did show him. It was not convenient way to do it, but I encountered that situation. So, later, somebody came into the dormitory areas, and this person was furious because she was asked to do the same thing, but I think the phrasing was slightly different or something. That's why she was very upset. She felt she was violated. She said, "If you want me to take my pants up, then will you also ask me to pull my pants down?" Because if you want to find a contraband, we see that in the movies and TVs a lot too. Probably people can actually hide the contrabands in their vaginas or, you know, whatever. So, how far should this search goes in a homeless shelter? In the past, when frontline service was a provider, we have even got a situation, people was asked to take the clothes off right in front of the lobby or to lift their shirts up. They even suspect you hide anything else rather than you change your wallet or your cellphone in your bra, in your panties. How far should this go? We want a place to secure, to be safe, true. However, it seems like nobody knows how to do this job right. In the past, when frontline was there, good staff would at least have a way to tell the security officers what to do, what not to do. Sure, bad staff will give different instruction. But now, it seems like it's even stranger because staff couldn't even ask the officer to do it in the more humane ways. So, it's solely up to that officer, you may, at that moment. And officer, it seems like this particular company is called Safe Choice. They reports to the person who told me, I already told you in May this year, for me to file a grievance is a luxury, is a privilege. Seems like the officer, they only report to that person. Even the staff couldn't stop the inhumane behavior. Now, this company right now gets a security job, the contract with Adams for. All of you may also have a chance to go there to have a meeting. I want to see how you will be searched, how you will feel about it, because you know that's not really right. Please, move this service into county jail. In that case, we cannot complain. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Has anybody else signed in for public comment?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We will now then move on to item number four, the main item for the day, which is our presentation on the update for the ERP system from our consultant, Zig Burzens. And before Zig starts, I would like to express my appreciation, and I'm sure I speak for all of us, for all the hard work and good information and assistance that you've provided us this year. I don't think that the ERP installation would be as far along as it is if it weren't for your efforts, and we appreciate this very much and look forward to continuing to work with you in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
The holiday season is upon us. Okay, so this is our December report. Because you just recently received the November report from the Department of Information Technology, I thought it might make some sense for us to sort of recap and talk a little bit about that report.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So, that's why we're here, at least for now, and I wanted to first, you know, kind of present to you the outline of the report. I added the page numbers so you could kind of see where the substance of the report actually existed. But that, in essence, is the outline. But then I wanted to talk a little bit about each section. So, the very first one was a schedule overview, and I'm just letting you know that mainly that's a repeated graphic, that's showing up in virtually all of the last four to five months' worth of project reports. And, you know, I have continually suggested that it would be nice if the team would provide a percent complete indication on those bars so that you kind of know where they are. Okay? But that's still not the case. The next section is the actual update of the plans. You know, mainly that's the project management group providing updates, and they're relating it to prior reporting, and there's understandably some repetition in there with regard to, you know, what's going on. Okay? The project work at a glance, actually, that's mainly the INFOR teams' report. So, that's what's really sitting in there, telling you where it is, and that was the portion that had the various arrows that are different colors, and we'll talk about those. Program finances, last month, we, you know, saw a change in the way the finances were reported to you, and so they're continuing that now. They're basically showing you the to-date plus estimated to complete so that it all ties out to the $25 million. I mean, that's the way it's being reported to you and being tracked. The thing that is not there, you know, is that, you know, we now have a new way of billing with INFOR, which is a fixed fee on a monthly basis. And we've talked before about the fact that, you know, are they going to track the various deliverables each month? And they basically say they are, but the point is, is there's no indication of that. Okay? The benefits estimate, just basically, it's a continued comment, it's a repeated statement, and that statement just continually says that HR and financial benefits will be basically provided to you later. So, it's sort of kicking the can down the road. Council inquiries, I mean, they did quite a decent job in terms of responding to your questions, and they've added quite a bit of appendices. So, in essence, the total report goes from about a 35-page report to a 100-page report, and they also included our report as well. So, the appendices, it made some sense for you to at least take a look at the appendices with regard to the RSM, third-party assessments. And if you recall, they were hired by the administration to provide, you know, assessments with regard to testing readiness as well as deployment readiness, getting, you know, is the administration ready to do their testing? Are they ready to do the rollout of the project? So, I think it's important to remind ourselves that, and last month, we, I think we told you, and I think they told you, that they've changed the assignment for RSM. So, RSM is not doing general ledger and DEPM readiness work, and those are the ones that are coming up in January. Instead, they're doing some later in the year. Okay? So, it's kind of shifted around a little bit. I just wanted you to be aware, but they do a list, at least list mainly the open items that they have found with regard to talent acquisition being the main item that they were looking at, and that's the one that was turned on just a few days ago. Okay? They do repeat the glossary. The glossary's been in there, I think, unchanged for six months. And then they've got a lot of supporting documents, and they've listed, and I've listed those for you, and those supporting documents beyond our report from last month. It's also the various security and control reports from INFOR, which we talked about a couple of months ago. So, the picture that is painted by that report is relatively smooth sailing, and I think that's good news. You know, as far, for the next two months, things look like they're going to happen. So, I want to talk a little bit about managing a project and using project plans to manage a project. So, the image here is whether large or small, okay, you really ought to be managing a project with a project plan, and the project is the globe, the project is the world as you see it, and Atlas is the plan, because that's what supports how you get to executing what you're trying to accomplish with plans. So, I thought I'd repeat for you what the ultimate project management tool is, and that's the project plan. And so, I've sort of paraphrased the standard approach to executing a project, completing a project, and that's paraphrased from the Project Management Institute. These are generally accepted best practices. So, it's the project management, in essence, assures you that your project will be successful. That's what makes it successful, is having good, solid project management, and the main tool ought to be a detailed project plan. So, what are the pros and cons of using a project plan? There's no question that a project plan organizes the work for you, okay? So, that allows you to make sure if something doesn't fall through the crack. It identifies accountability. Who's going to do things? Tracks progress. We've talked about this. Percent completes is commonly accepted and commonly used as how do you tell where you are? Okay? It allows bottoms-up planning, because one of the most effective ways of developing a plan is to ask someone, "How long is it going to take you to do that?", rather than telling them. It ensures rigor and discipline. Okay? It ensures rigor and discipline. Big point here, it's one version of the truth, and I'm going to talk some more about that because when we get to the report, the November report, we start seeing anomalies, we start seeing multiple versions of the truth, we start seeing things that don't tie together. The bar charts don't tie to the words type of thing. And it enables conflict and dispute resolution, if you've got that level of detail. So, what are the cons? What are the cons? It enables planning to plan. There's a tendency for people to say, "We got to replan, we got to replan, we got to replan." I mean, it has a tendency to do that. It does become time-consuming. No question about it. It becomes time-consuming. But it's also the first to fall, it's the first thing that people put off when you start fighting alligators and fighting fires. Don't have, we don't have time to take care of updating that plan, got to take care of this fire. Okay? Which is not a very disciplined or rigorous way of managing a project. It requires some degree of rigor and discipline, just said that, and it makes it easier for you to kick the can down the road. Makes it easier to defer and delay things because they come up and they say, "Oh, we got to do this. Oh, we got to do this." And if you haven't done that in detail and planned that in detail, then you start pushing things out. We'll do it next week. So, I've got some phrases here. These are taken, these are taken from the report, or they're taken from emails about what is the position of DOIT with regard to detailed project management planning and updating the plan. Okay? So, they consider it an administrative chore, okay, and that the team is fully concerned, consumed with executing the project, so they don't, they really have the time to take care of updating the plan. I think I told you last month, two of the key people from a leadership perspective in the project really have a bandwidth concern. I have, I have a concern regarding their bandwidth, and that's the program director, who is the, you know, interim CIO, and it's also the project manager of the fiscal component jack. Okay? So, those people have, just simply don't have enough bandwidth, and they've been trying to get help. I understand that. But that's one of the reasons why this is their position. And then the next bullet talks about the fact that DOIT has decided to take a modular, active-participation-based methodology. So, their approach is a lot of stand-up meetings, a lot of daily meetings, a lot of weekly meetings, and a lot of very verbal kind of activities. Those are usually very conducive to solving fire issues and alligator issues. Alligator comes up, starts snapping at you, say, "Okay, let's take care of that one." All right? They don't think that a detailed project plan is conducive to drive, and this is their terms, their words, it's not required to drive daily activities. I agree with that. I mean, to lay out a detailed plan that lays out things at a daily basis would be monstrous. Okay? That's truly time-consuming. But, you know, the question becomes, what about weekly? Yeah? Okay? Keeping the overall project updated is secondary to the activities. So, earlier on in this email, they listed all their earlier activities, and that was all these weekly meetings, daily meetings, and so on. So, as far as DOIT is concerned, it's secondary to updating the plan. Executive leadership did make the comment to me that they're very hopeful that they can get back to doing Microsoft Project Plan at some future point. That's about as far as I can take it. So, just to let you know, what's the most recent project plan that I have received from the team? And mind you, I'm looking for, I'm looking at these things mainly from a point of view of is its existence. So, workforce management, and you'll notice that we now have three, three main work streams, and that's really the way everybody is orienting all the work here. All the work is being structured along those lines. So, work order management, which is EAM, the last plan I got was two months ago. GHR, which includes core benefits, talent acquisition, learning management, HR services, delivery, and talent management. I got one last, this week, early in the week, and the one before that was a month ago. Okay? So, I have something more current with some updates in it from GHR. Fiscal, which includes general ledger, project accounting, DEPM, which is for budget reporting, accounts payable, procurement cash, treasury, receivables, billing, grants, workforce management, payroll, fixed assets, expense management, contracts, and strategic sourcing. That's a lot. Okay? That's the fiscal group, that's the fiscal team, that's the one, that's what Jack is responsible for. Okay? The last plan I got was two months ago. Now, with regard...
Okay. We have a question. Councilman Schron.
A few slides ago, you said you thought everything was working on those areas and going in accordance, and then you come along and say that you haven't seen an update in two months on two of these areas and one a week ago with a month ago before that. How are we sure that we're on time and target on, I mean, just say fiscal?
Well, let's talk about that.
I mean, if the last report you saw was two months ago.
Yeah. Well, the last detailed plan with updates, and I'm absolutely convinced that, you know, part of the reason why I haven't received one is because Jack's, doesn't have the bandwidth. But by the same token, I have received from Jack a lot of his detailed spreadsheets where he lists all the various issues and activities. I mean, so he's got a tremendous amount of detail associated with the projects that are currently in play. The ones that are currently in play is general ledger, project accounting in his area, as well as the preparation for workforce management and payroll integration testing. Those are the big, main pieces that are in play. He's beating those to death with a lot of detailed stuff, so I'm fairly comfortable that he's on top of that. Okay? And the smooth sailing piece, I think I was making sure you recognized that that's their position. I mean, that's the picture that I believe they paint with their November report. And certainly, you know, the meetings that he's having that I've attended, I mean, things seem to be moving along. Be that as it may, be that as it may, I still don't have evidence, you know, that the plan is there, and I'm thinking not only just, I mean, does he have a lot of detail, and he even includes it, if you remember, in the November report, there's the first, next three months are laid out for the fiscal piece, and he, by week. So, he's got that kind of stuff laid out, it's just not in a plan. You know? And so, that's, and he's tracking on that fairly well. But I'm worried about what's down the road. You know, if you don't have a plan, if you don't sit there and say, "This is how long it's going to take me to do workforce management, and this is what has to be in place in order for me to get integrated system testing going," you know, those kinds of things can come back and really haunt the project team. And INFOR and their, and the people that made their reports in that November report already indicate that there are some issues in workforce management and payroll. Those are the risky ones. Am I answering your question?
I think that you're comfortable that you're seeing the detail that looks like if it was to be compiled, it would create a plan and would create a layout. At least, at least I think I understand that.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Your concern is that that's still fairly short-term. You went to sleep on your computer up there. The, is that's still, in your definition, fairly short-term, but we just pushed a number of items into a summer drop-dead, and so, I'm not trying to put a word in your mouth, but those are the ones you're concerned about, the ones that we've already said. Those are fixed dates, they're coming in the summer, and you don't see a plan to get those achieved. But I guess I'll rely on the fact that if you're doing the detail work for the short term, that hopefully that same person is on schedule, even though you're not seeing it. I'll just, we'll rely on the fact that we've got reputable steps being taken place on everything except for the workforce area and the HR stuff that you're concerned about.
Okay. Shall I continue? Okay. So, I did receive the GHR plan for human resources, and again, there's good news in the sense that it actually, because a month ago, it didn't even have the percent completes in there for talent acquisition, yet talent acquisition, as we just mentioned, you know, started just within a few days ago. So, those were all updated, and that's good news. I mean, that, so that activity did take place, and we're pleased that that's the case. Well, not so good news. I mean, there are still some tasks in there that simply have not been updated. And again, you know, most likely that is a bandwidth, other things are more important. You know, you've already heard earlier that updating the plan is secondary in the minds of the leadership of the project team, so that's probably the reason why some of that is there. Last month, I saw an anomaly, and I was, I'm just blown away by the fact that it's there again, one month later. That's the last line, says talent management, first of all, lost all of the detailed tasks that used to be there, so they were removed for who knows why. But the target date is 4/5/21. You know, if the project plan and using the Microsoft Project Tool were to be used to generate the bar chart, which it should do, then clearly, this would have been solved, and everybody would have seen right away that there's a problem with that target date. That's such a solvable thing, and it's just surprising to me that it would continue to stay there. So, let's talk a little bit more about the report in terms of some clarifications that probably you should be making. Now, I've pulled some quotes out of the report, and my purpose here is to show you some of those quotes, to show you some anomalies, to show you some situations where waiting until January and the December report is probably a little bit longer than you would want to wait to find out if something is going on. Because if you, if you, from 12, if there's something that's supposed to go live on 12/5, it's supposed to roll out 12/5, should you really wait to hear about it in January, or should you say, "Well, why don't you just tell us it happened?" It, you know, otherwise, some surprises can happen, right? You end up waiting three or four weeks, and something else can happen, and you get surprised, and then in January, somebody might come up to you and say, "Well, we had to reschedule that." Okay?
We actually just asked for updates in the last day or two on some of these that we picked up from the last report, so we're thinking the same as you.
Great. That's exactly what I think makes sense. Absolutely. So, some of these may have already been answered. So, all activities planned for EAM work stream have been completed. I mean, so that was the statement, that's in the report. So, the question becomes, okay, when does DOIT stop getting their people funded by the $25 million authorization? I guess it's time for someone to stand up and say, you know, "They're in our day-to-day operation, they don't, we don't, they're not part of this project anymore." Activities related to integration of EAM to other modules, such as workforce management, procurement, et cetera, will be tracked and managed in these work streams. I find the word et cetera to be imprecise. So, it seems to me, and there aren't that many, it seems to me like someone ought to be able to tell you that there are six interfaces, and here they are. Okay? We ought to know. And interestingly enough, interestingly enough, in here, the example includes the module procurement. Several pages later, you will see a quote where the word procurement does not exist in the list. Which is it? You know, is EAM going to interface with procurement, or is it not? I certainly know for a fact that Public Works has a great interest in being able to feed requisitions directly from the work order system to procurement. I know that for a fact, yet there's some rumblings that that may not be in scope. That's concerning. By listing them specifically rather than using et cetera, of course, we address that, right? Everybody has to go on record as saying either it's in or it's not. So, I think that, you know, you guys should be requesting that kind of information.
Okay. Councilman Schron.
By bringing up procurement under Public Works, that's one of our also opportunities to bill and invoice customers. So, if you're looking at the procurement side of the buying, are you also looking at the EAM on the invoicing side to our customers?
If they give you the list, you'll know.
Which gets covered by et cetera, I'm sure.
So, I suggest that you, you know, it's not a long list.
No, but we're talking about, in Public Works, we're talking about the advantages of some of the monies we spent at Public Works because we now have the ability to gain some efficiencies through this, so we are able to bill our customers who are using our sewers and our services and our, and I mean, that's the real gain, is to eliminate the paperwork.
Absolutely.
And if we're not, if we're talking about accelerating the procurement, we ought to be asking, is et cetera cover the invoicing also, so we can send the invoice electronically to our customer?
If I were to have a copy of the detailed plan for procurement, let's say, okay, which is out there, further out there, it should, it should include activities that say finalize the technical design of the interface from EAM to procurement, develop the interface, test the interface, and so on. Those should be activities that literally would be in the detailed plan. I'm suggesting that since we don't have that information, I don't see it, so, you know, you should maybe ask them to say, "Well, by interface, tell me which work stream is responsible for that piece," rather than kicking the can down the road and basically saying, "Well, it's going to be handled by those work streams," et cetera. I mean, in generality. I mean, to me, that's not good enough.
The operative word is enterprise.
Yes.
It is not incident, EAP. We are supposed to be doing enterprise resource planning out there. Uh, we are supposed to be doing enterprise resource planning out there, so the enterprise would be both buying and selling our services.
Yep.
What do you mean when you say identify by interface?
Well, I'm, I'm a list person. I mean, it seems to me like when the list is short, there's no reason why you can't include the entire list. So if there are six interfaces, or seven, or eight, from EAM to something, I don't see them in a little table, I ought to see the name of that li, that interface, I ought to know what, I ought to say, well, what is that interface doing? Oh, it is requesting purchased items. Great. It goes to, and it goes to procurement. That's what it would say. Another one would say, I have an interface from EAM for bills to municipalities. It's, it's a request for bills, and it goes to billing in, you see what I'm saying?
So you're saying that we should ask, what are all the things that, that EAM is going to interface with, and, and what is the process for bringing that about?
And when you say by interface, you're literally identifying a task, an activity, is what you're doing.
Okay. List the interfaces. Okay, thank you. Councilman Tuma.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, through the chair, so what would be the, um, what would be the reason that they wouldn't want procurement as part of that? Because as, as Councilman Shawn was indicating in our Public Works discussions, it would seem that would be one of the things we actually have control over. So, I mean, billing out things, so what?
I, I don't have, I don't have an answer. Uh, I, I think I mentioned to you, I was, there were rumblings. So I'm getting secondhand comments, so I don't have any definitive, in a definitive statement with regard to that.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna rumble back that, that we, we should have that, that procurement should be part of that very specifically, so.
Absolutely.
For the record.
Absolutely, it should.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
So, um, again, this is coming from the report, and, and the, those little bars in the very, I think it was on the third page, you got all those bars. So here, this is the section from, you know, Core HR and Benefits. So, and I just kind of copied it very quickly for you, just so we knew what we were referring to. This has got the same kind of question as the one about EAM. If, if you're saying it, you know, see the words launched on there? If you're saying it's launched, does that mean that it's still part of the project, or are you finished? You know, and if it's finished, should the support personnel be, stop being paid by the authorization for the capital budget? Or should they, or should they be paid by the day-to-day operating charges of, of the department? Should ask. Okay? Because it says launched. The other thing I've found interesting in the very last line, which is talent acquisition, in parentheses, it says the job portal. Okay, this is putting a, putting particular jobs out there, and so people can, can apply. Great tool, no, no argument there. It says that in twelve-five, on twelve-five, that little yellow piece is gonna, supposed to launch. So in the future, because we already have an answer to this question, okay? And I think this is one that you had asked, is, you know.
It has, it has been launched.
There you go.
Uh, I think they said it was launched on December tenth, it was a few days late, but it's, it's been launched.
Yeah. But the other thing that I think, you know, not only should you get immediate updates with regard to that stuff, so you don't have to wait three or four weeks, but secondly, on a monthly basis, as you go forward, you ought to be asking for statistical information that shows you that the product is being used. If it's in production, talent acquisition is in production, it's being used, then it would make some sense that you would think that everybody would want to track how much it's being used. Let's find out. So on a monthly basis, why shouldn't they say to you? Because, by the way, there is that information in there for work orders. You remember the November report had a section all about, these are all the work orders that we've been tracking. They're proving to you that it's being used. Excellent. Okay. Talent acquisition, how many jobs have been posted every month? How many new jobs have been posted every month? Tells you whether or not it's being used. How, in terms of responses, how many employees are responding to those job applications? How many people from the public are responding to those applications? To me, that's a very simple, straightforward thing. One would think the HR department keeps that kind of information. And that way, you get information that says, guess what, our enterprise, portions of our enterprise system are actually being used. Continue? Okay, uh, we, we need to remind ourselves of, about the benefits rollout, and I think we talked earlier that, that there's a piece, a major piece sitting there that's not complete, uh, which is the, passing the interface data from, from the benefit system to the benefits providers. That's, and again, that was, I think that was a question that we, you know, is it, is that finished? And that was one that's, where I'm saying, you really ought to get, you know, up-to-date information regarding that, because it was planned for early this month, and I think the answer now is yes.
Yes, we got information this morning that it's essentially been completed.
And then, and then the other question is, because this activity is tied to whether or not you receive your insurance card. Okay? Because that, those cards come from the benefit providers, okay? So then they need to get the information from the county, then they can issue those cards. So my understanding, and again, I think that was an answer that also has been made, which is good that you know that, and that is, that is that, you know, every, every, every indication right now is that the cards will come out in the same manner and the same timing as they have in the past, which is good news. With regard to dual entry of HR data, so the, the quote is the first couple of bullets in here, it's rather long, and just, it, it's talking to you about the fact that dual entry is going to go on, and I know, Ms. Baker, you, you were concerned about all this dual entry thing. And again, it, it, it makes sense, again, you know, for, for you to understand, well, what amount of effort or load is being placed on the HR department because of the dual entry? So there's no reason why you shouldn't say, well, fine, tell me how many. You know, just keep track of them. You know, so it would make sense for you to say, well, okay, every month, I want to know how many new employees were added, which is, I have to do it twice. How many employees were laid off, or, or fired, or, or retired, uh, which means I had to do it twice. And then how many changes that I have to make to employee records, I had to do it twice. And again, I would think that that kind of information is, should be relatively available, no reason, and if you request it, that kind of puts some pressure on them to, to give you the information, and that tells you what's going on, and tells you how big a deal it This is, this is talking about the, again, EAM, and this is a quote coming out of the report, says, "We're meeting with EAM to complete solution design for interfaces between EAM and General Ledger Payroll, Project Accounting, and WFM." You'll notice that purchasing is not listed, nor is contracts, nor is assets. Uh, you know, I, I, again, I don't know if there's a required interface to contracts and assets. I, I feel comfortable that there is one, there should be one for procurement. Okay? But, you know, there, we're not consistent, not consistent. Uh, "Key integration issues have been identified in our under-design review." Okay, so we're designing. So, so the question now becomes, all right, are we designing one time, or are we designing six times? And what I mean by that is if you'll look at this list down below, these are the modules and when they roll out according to the plan, that, that high-level plan, the big colored chart, that I'm sure you remember that was prepared by Jack. It roll, it, it says that we're gonna roll these out at these times. Well, okay. If that's the case, am I gonna be doing design work again on, for, for billing just prior to May? Or am I gonna do it one time now for billing? I don't know. If it would be in the plan, you, you would think you'd know. Expense management, XM is, is the, the INFOR phrase, you know, I just took that bar right out and just cut, cut that out of the report, and, you know, if you look closely at that, at that start date, it says December. That's what the start date is for design work on expense management. That's what the bar says. That was in the front of the report. The back of the report, we have a note here that says, "XM Design Activities to Start Mid-February 2019 for Target Deployment of August 2019." Okay? Left hand doesn't seem to know what the right hand's doing. If there were one version of the truth, if there were one overall plan, and the plan generated your bars, you wouldn't have that issue. So council should request the DOIT expl, you know, and if you're going to have that anomaly, the least you could do is explain it. If you're gonna say, well, we, we didn't update the bar, okay? But, no, there's nothing explaining it at all. But certainly, so I, I'm just kind of closing out on this, I, I'll repeat it because I think it's important. Instead of multiple versions of the truth, wouldn't a single master plan resolve such anomalies in reporting? And when I say single, I recognize that, you know, there are, there's an EAM work stream, there's a fiscal work stream, and there's an HR work stream. Okay, you know, three plans, okay. You know? But at least use that as your single point of reference, as your single version of the truth. Keep, I keep talking about EAM integration because it's important, it's hanging out there, it needs to be done, work orders and tying to everything else, and one of the largest benefits that, as you, as you mentioned, Mr. Shawn, that, one of the largest benefits right now that's been presented to you is from Public Works. I mean, that's what, they're the ones that are saying, hey, we can, we can actually generate a benefit. Great. That means you gotta give them the system they need to do that. So EAM requisition, this one I find interesting. This is, this is from the INFOR portion, and it's two different people, all right? So the EAM requisition to Lawson PO interface, this is purchasing now, is currently under discussion. So it's talking about interface, EAM to purchasing. The next one says, "Provided requirements to EAM team for procurement to EAM interface." That says procurement to EAM, the opposite direction. I don't know. I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it's a mistake, I don't know if it's an oversight, I have no idea. So, so, and then, and then, "Waiting on EAM interface to procurement to finish interface scripts are targeted smoke screen for inter, interface smokes test," I don't know what a smoke test is, "for interfaces is twelve-eleven." I'm going, wow. Okay, that's, I think, yesterday, or no, two days ago, two days ago. So again, if it's two days ago, do I really want to wait until January to find out if it's, if it's an issue? So they ought to, they ought to, you know, they ought to, you know, send you an update. They ought to say, hey, by the way, we met that date, or by the way, that's, that's gonna be moved by three weeks. And then, and then on the first question of to and from, but we're back to talking about those interface lists earlier, there's no question, you should always have a column that says to or from. That's crucial in terms of understanding which way the data's going. So I'm just summarizing here, so why, why pay attention to this? Why talk about this as much as we have? And it's, the various example anomalies suggest that there is not a single version of the truth, that we've got multiple work plans, multiple lists, you know, and they, it'd be nice if they were all tied together in a, in the detailed work plan, okay? And we'll come back to that when we talk about INFOR deliverables. The request for immediacy is, is, is this issue, is this issue of, if it's something early in the month, you really ought to find out about it soon, sooner rather than later. Why wait three weeks to find out you've got a surprise? Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. Let's talk about project condition. So the main reporting portion of the report that focused on the condition of the project is what INFOR was telling us. Okay? So INFOR gave us the condition of the project. Overall, the bottom, and I think this is why I was saying, you know, overall, project is smooth sailing for the next couple of months. Most of the reports indicate green, and, you know, a few months ago, we had an awful lot of red. So that's good news. Uh, so, uh, and no reds at all, okay? No reds at all. So that's the reason for the smooth sailing picture. There is an irony, and that's, you know, I go back to, you know, Core HR and Benefits said, we're launched, boy, we're out there, we're launched, you know? Well, we, we launched for, for open enrollment, but, you know, we still have pieces that need to be done. But the other concerning thing is that, again, INFOR team reporting that we've got, got issues, got some issues, um, you know, on, on Core HR and Benefits, and that's actually shown in yellow in the report, okay? And then the only other work streams that I mentioned earlier that are being shown in yellow on the report are the ones that I, I consider to be the risky ones, the ones that are of high risk for the, for the county, and that's workforce management and payroll. All right? Then I repeated the legend there to kind of remind everybody what those colors meant. So what's the outlook for the year end? Bottom line is, appears there's no major surprises coming in the next two months. No major surprises. I think you're still gonna have a couple, but no major surprises. And that, you know, DOIT will be able to deliver the remainder, uh, the remaining of HR stuff, all of the things associated with making sure that you get your, your cards in January, I think, will roll along reasonably well. I do think that, you know, it'll be interesting to find out how many dual entries are being made in HR. I, I don't know how much it is. I, I have heard through the grapevine, and not very much of that's been done yet, in terms of people adding to both systems. So I, I, I don't know. I don't know. But that's why I'm asking, okay, ask the question, you know? See if you can get that information to say, okay, how many, how many adds did you make in the past month? How many deletes and changes and so forth? It appears that the General Ledger and Project Accounting will not have any major surprises between now and January fourth, which is when Gen, General Ledger goes live. And they're in the middle of user acceptance testing right now.
Good.
Uh, there was a design confirmation review of some DEPM functionality, okay? There are four RICE items that have been identified, there are, you know, there, there are functional shortfalls. And so the, the county, uh, the county is negotiating with INFOR right now, taking the position that those are functional shortfalls that actually should be part of the product. And so I know INFOR is, is working on making a determination of whether or not they're going to include those in the product. If they do, needless to say that that means that, you know, the county doesn't have to pay for that work, uh, because it becomes part of the product. So that's, that's in the works, uh, but clearly, whatever happens, those, those particular functional shortfalls need to be completed in time for the testing that needs to take place, so that, so that Maggie can get her report by the end of January, which is the quarterly budget report. Some, you know, this is some information from, from the, from the, uh, project manager of the fiscal side, which is about what's going on with the General Ledger. I think the bottom line is, I just want to take you to the last line, which basically says, "Nothing has surfaced that would be a go-live showstopper at this time." So Jack's pretty comfortable with that. Okay? Rest of it gets into some of the detailed activities, but these are just taken from, from the information that he passed on to me. Let's talk a little bit about the OBM quarterly report. This is DEPM, Dynamic Enterprise Performance Management Module, uh, which is in essence the reporting module, is what has to be used, or will be used, to generate the OBM's quarterly budget report. I think the bottom, the first statement is very important to recognize, and that is, and again, this is a quote, "There is no part of that report that cannot be produced once all systems are integrated." That's a key caveat, once all systems are integrated, because it's, DEPM is a collector of data. It doesn't necessarily keep its own data, it's a collector of data. So it has to have information from the other systems. Therefore, the other systems have to be in place. Okay? The, what that's causing, at least initially, and is being worked, but what's causing initially is that the source of the data for, for the OBM report to, to prepare, uh, full-time equivalent information is hours coming out of the payroll system. Well, that's payroll system, the new payroll system isn't gonna be in place until June, or July.
So the, uh, the OBM quarterly report that comes... the OBM quarterly report that comes out in late January, or more likely, the first week of February. That report only covers activity through the end of 2018. It covers the fourth quarter. Is, is, is that report gonna require, uh, data generated through the new ERP system?
The way, the way it's being established, if you recall, the Lawson General Ledger, which is the INFOR's general ledger, the new general ledger, which will be turned on January the 4th, that's the official system of record. Okay? So what's gonna happen is that data will flow into the legacy general ledger, which is referred to as FAMAS. And that will then feed information to the new general ledger. Okay? So all of the data for 2018 that's being collected in FAMAS will be fed over to the general, new general ledger, and that also includes 2016 and 2017 data, because that quarterly report compares to those two.
So the, uh, the general ledger go-live for January 4th has to be successful in order for the, for the quarterly report to be properly generated?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That'll be, that'll be an interesting test. Okay.
Project spending, since, you know, you, you, you've got the report from, uh, from DOIT at Monday, so we didn't wanna talk too much about that one because it's somewhat consistent with the way things have been going. But I did wanna highlight for you that we now have this new billing approach from INFOR. Change Order 22 is signed, approved, uh, it's in play. And sometime in the next few weeks, I don't know the timing, sometime in the next few weeks, I mean, I'm sure INFOR's gonna provide their first billing according to that, to that particular change order.
Okay, I have an update on that, which is that we have just received the invoice from INFOR for that first billing. And so, and it's, uh, its label is Net 30, which means it's supposed to be paid within 30 days. So, so, uh, the idea is that within the next 30 days, we're supposed to, uh, review the performance against the deliverables and see if, see if they've done everything that they're supposed to do in order to receive that payment, and, and if so, that payment should be issued about 30 days from now. So that's, uh, that's, that's the update on that.
Thank you. It's nice to get current information. Uh, but I, what I'm, what I'm showing you here is, is actually an extract from Change Order 22. So every, every future month through the end of the project has a listing of deliverables, which was used, which was used by INFOR to figure out how much they wanna put together in their fixed fee amount. So what does, but the suggestion here is that it might make some sense for you to say, "Well, we just finished November," using that as the example, "and this is the list of the deliverables that theoretically were supposed to be done in November." Kinda like to know if they're done. You know, I mean, it shouldn't be all that hard, you know, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that's going on, but it's just not being reported to you, okay? So it's just a matter of, you know, putting a column on here and saying, "Okay, yes or no? Is it done or is it not done?"
Okay. Counselor, Mr. Thrun.
Well, see how we're getting information from this side to tell you that we got an invoice? It should be, that there should be, the deliverable should be attached to the invoice, should be very easy for them to identify, "You're getting an invoice for these items, and here are the deliverables, and we did deliver them and check them off." Why, why, why would that be so difficult to, for INFOR to?
If you, if you read the, if you read the, the change order, I mean, there is no, there is no official tie between the invoice and the deliverables. The deliverables are still listed and still considered to be part of the original base contract, and the approach was one of buy deliverable, check out, make sure it's okay, and buy deliverable. And that's all being done and should be done, you know, according to the original contract. This is kind of a secondary approach that basically says, "Okay, now that we have some idea of how many deliverables are supposed to be done in November, it seems to me the important piece here is to, is to maintain pace." And what I'm getting at there is, okay, if there's 48 of these things, and I only did 40 of them, whether, and I gotta decide whether or not it's okay to pay the bill. But let's say I, okay to pay the bill, it's those eight, what are you gonna do with those? Well, they're gonna roll into the list for December. Now, will they all get done, and we still do all of December? Or am I gonna continue to start, I mean, am I gonna start kicking cans down the road, which we don't want?
But I thought when we went through this and said, "We're gonna have a fixed fee on a monthly basis going forward," which is what we amended this agreement to do. And correlating with that fixed fee were deliverables that correlated to each month, I thought. And we had this discussion where you were saying, "Okay, there's some percentage that we're gonna say, 'Okay, we're 98% of the deliverables, we're 94.'" Some point along the way, there's a, an assumption that that's gonna be satisfactory, we're gonna release that 30-day net payment out to them. I thought there, I guess I clearly was under the impression that there was a list of November deliverables, a list of December deliverable, a list of January, and so on and so forth, that you would be able to correlate, because that, that those fixed payments go up and down between now and the end of the year.
That's right, that's right. I mean, and the list exists. I mean, it's, this is the actual list that you see in front of you.
These were the stated deliverables for November, when we entered into a, you know, fixed fee contract. Okay, so why, why would this be so difficult then to get a checklist from them that accompanies the invoice?
The, the question is whether or not you want the checklist coming from INFOR, whether you want the checklist coming from?
I'd love to have a dual, I'd love to have a dual cross-check and see, "You tell me if you did it, we're gonna verify it, and then we certify it." Seems to me that that's, that's a dual entry on both sides. And if we find out they're saying, "Yeah, they delivered it," and we find out that we disagree substantially as to what they thought, then I'm gonna have some challenges on the invoice payment. But conversely, I'm gonna have challenges on our end if we're not, if we're not monitoring what they're telling us they're delivering. There's nothing wrong with, I mean, I've never paid an invoice in my life that somebody doesn't know, "Here, this is what I want you to pay me for." Then our receivable department is gonna verify that, yes, I agree that what you asked me to pay is what I believe I've received. I mean, it's just not, that's not rocket scientists' concepts out there.
That makes sense. Ms. Baker?
Um, yes, along those same lines, I remember in, in a meeting we had from the leadership of this, that it wasn't, there is a subjective piece that if not all of it is finished, but enough is finished where they're satisfied that it will be done, that it will be prepaid. And I don't know if it was 98%, I think that was a call.
Number from Zig, about, it'll be some percentage, it'll, very rarely will it be 100.
But it'll be a, but it's a subjective, you know?
Very much so.
Yeah, opinion. I mean, we don't really know what's finished on these invoices unless they do highlight what is done, what's not done, what is yet pending. But I believe the conversations we had was, "That invoice will be paid in full, whether it's done or not," right?
If you, if you pay, yes, because it is, it is fixed. I, that's my understanding of, of the wording. The thing we're gonna have to watch out for, I mean, is, is the difference between INFOR finishing something, submitting it to the county, saying, "We have finished this piece, and now you need to review and approve." In the past, payment for that finished piece was reliant on the approval being made. Now the question becomes, "Okay, you got this long list, you know, are you gonna wait for approvals?" And some of the, and, and we've had this conversation before, should, should the, should INFOR enforce the guideline that said, "You're supposed to approve those in five days," or six days, or 10 days, whatever the number is, which has not been enforced? I mean, there are still deliverables from six months ago that are hanging out there, that have not been reviewed and approved. Now, there's an attempt to take care of those with, with the adjusting entries that you see at the bottom of these monthly lists. So, but that's gonna be the piece that I think puts some pressure on the county, probably appropriately, you know, to say, "Hey, get these things done, get them through the mill." And I, and I know, you know, that Mike Young is very interested in getting these things through the mill.
Okay, yes.
Boy, you know, it's hard to keep all this straight. But didn't we approve additional funding to pay for deliverables that were six months old so that they could clean this up? I thought we did that. I thought that was something that counsel did, or, or no?
I'm not aware of that.
That they moved money around within the 25 million in order to allow some of this to be done?
I think it's more, it's more a matter that they identified additional scope going forward that needed to be added to the program as opposed to, uh, anything with the prior deliverables.
Okay.
So as I understand this process, INFOR should, should tell us how much we owe and what, what they did for us in terms of deliverables to, to be entitled to that payment. And then, uh, the county has to determine whether we agree that they perform these deliverables. And, uh, and as the contract reads, the, the payment is all or nothing. We can't tell them, "Well, you did 75% of it, so you're gonna pay 70, we're gonna pay 75% of it." It's all or nothing, so, so we have to decide whether they're close enough. And, and as I anticipate what might happen, either we decide that they're close enough and we pay it, or we decide that they're not close enough and we don't pay it, or we might say, uh, "We think you can get close enough in, in, in a couple of weeks, so we're gonna hold the payment for a little bit and, and check again. And if, if by that time you're close enough, then, then we pay it." Is this kind of how the process might work?
Certainly it might work. Uh, I think you would, there's a piece in here that you probably need to be aware of, and that's, that there's also a monthly report supposedly that INFOR is supposed to provide, and I would presume that it's, comes with the invoice. But I don't know that. I mean, I did not know of anything up until, you know, yesterday or the day before. So hopefully there is one, and I have no idea what's in the report. But that is a new document that's, that's part of Change Order 22 in terms of saying it's gonna be provided, I would presume, with the invoice. So maybe that exists, I don't know.
Well, one thing is clear is that this, uh, this billing and payment process is, is certainly worthy of our oversight. We should, this is, uh, this is a good way of tracking what's happening or not happening, and, and we should watch this closely. Yes, Ms. Conwell?
Through the chair to Zig, is, once we've paid, is there any recourse we have if the deliverables are not met?
Well, the, the original contract is where I think you, you go when you start talking about the deliverables per se, because INFOR is contracted to provide the detailed listing of those deliverables. I mean, there's a statement of work, it's, you know, 20 pages long. Uh, and that original contract indicates that they will provide those deliverables. So they're on the hook to provide those deliverables, and that's what you go after, and that's, that's what you use contractually when you're talking about the deliverables themselves.
But if we, if we pay them an invoice and they haven't done one of those steps, do we have any recourse once we've given them the money?
I'd probably wanna ask an attorney.
I'm gonna take a crack at that.
Okay.
Suppose that, uh, that there's 25 deliverables for November, and they, they don't do three of them. And, but we say it's close enough, you're gonna get the three of them done, and so we pay them. Suppose that, suppose that in December, that there's 25 deliverables, and they complete all 25 of them and are entitled to payment, but they still haven't finished the three from November. We could tell them that even though you've completed all the, uh, the, the ones for December, we're not gonna make the December payment until the November ones are completed. This gives us, this gives us recourse, but it could be a messy contract situation and, and, uh, so, uh, by, by the way, I'm, I'm gonna digress for, for just a moment and, and mention that, uh, at the blockchain conference, they were talking about smart contracts where, where this kind of decision-making is, uh, is not done by human beings, it's preset by computer. And, and you put, you put forward an algorithm in advance that determines whether the deliverables are met and whether the, the person is entitled to payment. And if, uh, and if, uh, if it's met, the, uh, the system transfers the money, and if it's not met, it does not. So, so, uh, contracting may be heading in that direction down the road, but that's just a little digression. Ms., Ms. Conwell?
So, I mean, I'm still not, I mean, I understand. Have we, is it, has that been our past practice so far? That we've been paying for invoices and one or two, three steps have not been done?
Well, in the past, part of, the reason that we, you went through this change order is because you were getting, you were getting invoiced for each individual deliverable. And so each individual deliverable was invoiced, each individual deliverable was then paid. Okay, so your control, your control of whether or not you pay someone was review and approval of that deliverable, period, end of story. So my understanding is that contractually, you're still in that situation where you review and approve each individual deliverable. And that, that's the, and your recourse, your recourse is, according to that contract, would be then you haven't finished that deliverable, you need to finish it. And if it, either it's at their cost or your cost, who knows? I mean, that's something to be decided, but that's, that's your recourse on a deliverable-by-deliverable basis. Yeah, oh, that's the way it's been happening since the very beginning. Starting with this invoice, it changes. That payment now is in a lump sum. Okay? Payment is now in a lump sum.
So do we have any mechanism? Are we gonna do the same kind of mechanism, or?
Well, there, well, there's a, there's presumably, presumably, they, the, the team has, has the invoice, and it's for the amount of money that they expected, which is about, what is it? About a million dollars or whatever it is. And so now they need to go through and say to themselves, "Okay, did we get everything we thought we were gonna get?" I presume that's what they're gonna do.
So they're gonna sign off a list of things?
Sure, one would hope, but that's what, that's what I'm suggesting you probably ought to ask for every month. You know, so you can, again, to maintain pace. But at some point in time, you gotta make a judgment call, are we gonna hold payment or not hold payment? Because that's the only recourse you, I think you have, is either hold the payment or not.
Well, we, don't we need a list to know what the, the itemized things are that we're, should be looking for?
Well, you do have that, you have the, you do have a list in the change order that says, "These are the ones that we're right now planning to do in November." From, that was from two months ago. And that list exists.
But they haven't been done?
I don't know that. I mean, I, I presume most of them have been done. I presume most of them have been done. Okay? One of them is very. Okay, one of them is very interesting, it talks about sign off on EAM, I mean, that's what it says. So.
Just to analogize to, to the chairman's comments, what's been the problem in the past is we got some, that they told us they did the work six months ago, and we haven't, we haven't done our part of paying the vendor. So, this is a way, and which, there's gotta be two sides to that equation, and we haven't been living with our half of the equation. And so I can see where the vendor's getting a little disappointed. And this is a way in which, at least, we, we both said, going forward, these are the new rules.
Understood, thank you. Ms. Baker?
You know, and I guess we, we are under contract, but in the private sector, if you go through an invoice and there are two or three things that are not delivered, you deduct those, pay the balance, and then carry those other things to the next bill. And if they're delivered, then you add that to the next bill and deduct what hasn't been done yet, and, and just move it forward.
That is a way, there's no question about it.
Instead of holding up?
That's not the agreement you have with in for. The agreement is with a fixed amount, and it's, it's all, it's basically all or none.
All right.
Okay, proceed.
So let's talk a little bit about data integrity. And just wanted to bring up the fact that, you know, the Department of Internal Audit has been actively involved with the project, as they should. But, you know, they're, they're becoming frustrated because they're getting some deferrals of responses, they're getting some non-responses with regard to some of their partial responses with regard to some of their recommendations. They have actually made a decision that they're gonna no longer wait for some of the security documentation that they've requested. And as part of their testing, and so they're gonna move on, so. But what that means is that the Internal Audit Department will probably note that limitation in their report. I mean, it just means that there's going to be some, and then they are going to follow up and apparently are going to do a thorough review of GHR security after everything is finished. Just letting you know that it's going on.
So when you're talking about security documentation, is this related to disaster recovery, or is this something else?
This, this is related more to the actual way the system is designed and segregation of duties, different responsibilities, who can have access, who can't, those kinds of things, okay? I mean, disaster recovery planning continues to be something sitting out there as well.
So, do you have any idea why we're not delivering on the security documentation?
I, I really don't, I mean, it, all I can say is what their, what their perception is and what, you know, what I've been told.
It's, it's, it's not a good thing when internal audit is unhappy.
That's my point.
Any other questions? Okay, please proceed.
Okay, so, so to close, I mean, in terms of talking about the outlook for 2019, I spent a lot of time on this last time. There's really only one thing I wanted to bring up in terms of the outlook for 2019, and that's the fact that this is the plan document, this is the, what you've all seen, this is the plan for 2019. This has been agreed to in terms of target dates by most of the team members. But my question is, is this the extent of the planning? Is there more? Is there a detailed plan? I know that there's more detail with regard to the next two months, next three, yeah, two months, okay? But I keep saying for fiscal, I really don't have a copy of their detailed plan, I have, I can't say that it exists. You know, are, you know, is Jack pulling together things on a weekly basis and laying things out and that sort of thing? Yes, but I really don't have a plan, so, you know, all I can say is there used to be a plan that had tasks and activities for all of this. It used to be there. So it was a matter of revising, modifying, rescheduling, updating, I mean, those kind of activities. And I just simply have not had any evidence that it's, that it's going on.
So the question is, you don't know if for 2019, there's, there's a plan that details what, what the interim step-by-step process is, that what has to be accomplished and when in order for this to work properly?
Exactly. You know, because the, these are target dates, I mean, and so, and we've talked about this earlier. I mean, part of the process of planning is to identify your critical path, and then knowing the sequence of the things that need to be done. Well, it's, it's kinda like, let's talk about an example right now where I know that the, the THR team is, is revising and updating and redoing the organization's structure. Well, the thing we have to remember is the organization's structure is the system of record for the entire system, not just HR. So it's gotta be in place so that, guess what? The risky two products, workforce management and payroll, those are the risky ones, those are the ones that, you know, they need the organization's structure. So we can't be thinking about the fact that, oh, well, I, I have all the way until July to work on the organization's structure. The answer is no. If I'm gonna start testing on workforce management in January or February, I have to have it done at that point in time, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Those are the kinds of things that need to show up in the detailed plan.
Okay. Questions or comments? Ms. Baker?
Yes, first of all, thank you again for your report, very enlightening. We have, and I'm sure you've reviewed the monthly status briefing to us from the, from the team. So in the back, they have council inquiries, and they have comments that you have made, and then they've responded. So, you know, in looking through some of these, there are some differences of opinion as to whether or not they agree or, or disagree. Is there anything in their responses that you find to be concerning? And I have a couple of them in here, but I just wondered, first of all, if there was anything there that you said, no, that's not really a good answer, or no, that still leaves me with some question and concern? Is there, you know, what, what did you think of their response?
I'm trying to avoid he said, she said.
Yeah, I, well, just overall, I mean, can we take these responses and say, oh, that's good?
Sure. Well, and some of those are definitely differences of opinion. I think the, the comments about disaster recovery, I think, you know, were, were probably, you know, and, and there was a lot of energy put into adding a lot of data in there just to say, oh, yeah, this exists from in for. But we had already covered that the month before.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I think that, that's just an example of somebody not knowing about what was covered the month before. Because we had already talked about the fact that we finally got all this information from in for, that yes, they have the backups, and yes, they have the backup plans, and the disaster recovery plans, and yes, they have the security reviews. We do that. The disaster recovery thing, the thing that I tried to say is that I, I recognize that in for's got the disaster recovery plan. The problem is that the county doesn't have a disaster recovery plan. Has it spent a lot of time and energy planning and thinking about it? Sure. But the bottom line is it doesn't exist. And, and it's not me that's saying that, it's the state auditor that's saying that. And the state auditor has said that several years in a row. Well, they're probably gonna say it again this year unless somebody can say, yeah, we got it.
They said it again, we just, we, we just reviewed it a couple days ago.
So, so, you know, should the county have a disaster recovery plan? Of course they should.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, you know, it, it's, everything is good about the fact that, you know, we're outsourcing and, and in for's gonna take care of that stuff, and I say, great, but that still doesn't mean that you, you've got coverage for what you've got left here.
Right.
Is that, so, so that's just, I think that's just a matter of that individuals on the team just simply weren't aware of the fact that we had already talked about that for two months prior.
Right, yeah, and as we said earlier, we did know that, that is another, we heard it again. A couple of things, if you don't mind, you may.
To respond to your last question.
Yes.
One thing that there, where there's a visible disagreement is that Zig believes that, that within the county there should be a project-wide weekly overview and update process. And, and the administration is relying more on these, these team meetings within individual segments as opposed to, to getting the big picture overview on, on, on a weekly basis. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and along with that, I thought concerning was the talk about having an overall leader and having Mr. Hay who has, has left, what's happening with that position?
Who has not left. Mr., oh.
Jim Hay.
Jim Hay.
Jim Hay has left.
Yeah, who has left, and it's reported here that everything is going smoothly and other people are absorbing the work that he was in charge of. And I don't see any indication here of hiring anyone to take the place of that person. And I, I guess that was kind of concerning as an answer back as to what is going on with making sure that the project moves forward and that we aren't overloaded, I think, or overwhelmed by what has been left. You know, have you heard anymore about whether or not there's going to be some kind of replacement, and it certainly isn't gonna be Mr. Rhine? Because he's staying where he is noted here in this response. So where are you on, on that in understanding how they're managing?
The, the last that I heard, which is several weeks old now, is that, that there is an attempt being made to replace Jim Hay with an employee. Okay, the problem is, I mean, is that it's gonna take time. And, and I think we talked about that last month. I, I'm, quite frankly, don't think it's valuable to try to do everything without him and wait for this new employee, which could take as long as six months. It seems to me like the right answer, and I, we talked about that then, the right answer is go out and get yourself a contractor. And, and have that person take over and do those things. It seems to me like that would mean that, oh, then we would have some of the cost counting kinds of things that Jim Hay was doing, some of the project tracking and all those kinds of things. Those are things that he was doing.
Yeah.
That right now is, is kind of spread out, and as soon as it got spread out, you know, all of a sudden you got, you got Jack being overloaded and can't get it done.
Right.
You know.
That's not going to get better?
I, I don't think so.
Right. My last question would be to the chair. We got this feedback from the last time that we met with, with Zig. I would say with all the questions that are in this packet, that we ask for a response. That the questions, I think, are not insignificant that are in Zig's overview for this month, and that we just ask the team to answer them. Answer, can you highlight the bill? Answer, you know, some of the things that we talked about in execution. Just, let's just say we, we appreciate the response that you gave, which I don't know if we really asked them for that. I think they picked and chose what they wanted to answer. But it's pretty well outlined here as to what the concerns are. So let's just say, give us a report, Zig can't, all he can do is, is, is identify it and tell us. So I would just think that it would be prudent of us, instead of trying to ask all the things that he's already asked individually, just say, answer the questions that are in Zig's report. And concisely, and let us take a look at it.
You're heading in the same direction that I was heading.
Good.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, ask Trevor to, to use both the written report and, and today's session. And, and and to compile a list of questions, which, which we will review and, and and hopefully in the next few days send to the administration and, and, and get a report. I'm, I'm in agreement with both you and Zig that we shouldn't wait till the, the December monthly update that we should be monitoring continuously. So, so we're gonna do our best to do that.
May, and in addition to that, and I, like I said, I appreciate the response back, but let's make sure that all questions are answered, not just the ones that perhaps they felt were important, but all of them. We don't wanna see the monthly bill not answered. We, we wanna see all of them, they're significant, all the things we said here today, things that are in this report. We all think they're significant, they're not frivolous. Let's get an answer on everything that was talked, and I appreciate Trevor's help on that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, well, I would like to, to thank you again for, for a very comprehensive and useful report. We're gonna, we're gonna follow up on these, these questions and, and and we're gonna, we're gonna have a a personal update for Mike Young, probably shortly after the first of the year so we can, we can get information on the January 4th implementation. We're, we're gonna work with Zig on a schedule for our continuing work together during the coming year. And I'm sure that with the holiday season upon us, people have places to go and things to do. So with nothing further holding our attention, and I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.